I just want to say one thing that's been on my heart this week. And we all had an opportunity to just rest, to kind of take it easy for a few days because we were snowed in. So I hope you enjoyed some time just relaxing and getting away from technology for a little bit, at least for just a few hours, because it was really nice.
That's right. Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, Lord. I thank you for Sumner County. I thank you for our emergency services. I thank you for our highway department that worked so hard, and our cities, Father, and the employees that had to be out in the cold. I pray that you would continue to be with us as a county, in our cities, that you would give us your wisdom to make decisions that would benefit our county and the citizens in our county. Lord, we thank you for just, you're with us all the time, Lord, the craziness that's going on around us, from national politics all the way down locally, Father, things that we get frustrated with. But we know that ultimately, at the end of the day, you're in charge, and we thank you for that, Lord. And I just pray that you continue to hold us in the palm of your hand. In Jesus' name, amen.
Our pledge will be led by the county clerk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, Colorado.
Each Commissioner records your presence. It's Ring, Commissioner Ring.
Okay, we have one absence, and that's Commissioner Ring. I would remind everyone, though, that the majority vote will remain thirteen, and two-thirds vote will remain sixteen. We have approval of the regular agenda.
This Chairman, I have the number of six under the budget. And this is, would be clarifying language regarding Resolution 2307-11. And this is relevant to the appropriation of funding for ARPA funding for waterline grants, or for the waterline project up in the northern part of the county.
All right, a motion and a second.
One more, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
This, unfortunately, this county commission has been accused of adding things or doing things inappropriately, and I don't want us to get falsely accused of something, or be accused something rightly or justly. According to Roberts Rules, and because this is in committee, for something to be considered by the main commission while it's also going through the committee process, it has to be discharged from committee, which would require a two-thirds majority vote, and just wanted to make this commission aware of that, that it would need to be properly discharged from committee before it can be considered. So that is my point of order, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm in agreement with that, with what has been shared with me by the attorney a little while ago, because we may have several instances here tonight where that would come into play. And I'd like to remind you of how we're operating, and that is that the chairperson of the commission is and has, for as long as I remember, been the parliamentarian of the commission. And he has advice from the attorneys, he has advice from other people, and I researched, like I did, several issues coming up tonight. If I make a decision, it will be my decision and not the attorney's, or not yours, it'll be mine. Now, that doesn't mean that I'm dictatorial, because if you disagree with my decision at any time, you may ask for the chair to be overruled. But I do agree with this one, from what the attorney has showed me, and that's the way we will operate. So we will need two-thirds vote to discharge this from committee, from what I've seen. And I will research that further later, because there is one other place in Roberts Rules, and another section that says that if it's not on the agenda for the night, it can be added by a majority vote. And if it is a, before the agenda is approved, and if it's after the agenda is approved, it's a two-thirds vote. So I will promise you, I'll get clarity on that, but we'll go with the, I'm going to go with the attorney's advice tonight on that particular ruling. Okay.
Can I do the government question? This question is, in this particular case, I don't know of any others, but in this particular case, I had attempted, as the Chair of Budget Committee, I had attempted to place this on to a special call session because of emergent weather conditions. I removed that, and I canceled that meeting. So does that cancellation count as a removal from committee, and thus would make this not in the committee process, and thus only subject to a majority vote? That is my question.
From what has been shared with me by the county attorney, it doesn't take into consideration any kinds of emergencies, weather conditions, or, it's silent on that.
Right, but my question is not about the weather conditions itself, but the fact that I had canceled that session, and thus removed it from the committee process. I had canceled that, and it's no longer in committee.
Let me consult with the attorney a moment, and then we will... The attorney is of the belief that since it has already been through committee, that it will not need anything but a majority vote, since it's a clarification, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we will need, since there's been a challenge to that, we'll need a vote.
It didn't pass through the committee process, it was just in committee, it was supposed to be in a special called, so it didn't get discharged from committee. I mean, it never, there was never a vote taken on this in the committee. That's why there was a special call, because it wasn't on an agenda, except for the special call meeting, so just clarification on that, so with that opinion.
I would have thought, I would have thought that it would take a two-thirds vote, but I'll let the attorney speak to this, I'll ask him to speak to the issue, and then I will go one way or the other after he speaks.
Okay, if we're calling this something that is still on a committee item, it's going to need a two-thirds vote. If the, this is the waterline resolution, I believe, if, which has been through the resolution process already, so if it's being brought to the agenda as for clarification purposes, I think the majority vote would be okay at that point in time. If you're going to exercise caution, I would say go two-thirds either way, but it's all in what it is you're trying to present, so I can't answer how you're wanting to present it.
I'm, I'm going to say that on the advice of the council, that I will go, and I can be, let me remind you that any decision that I make, or a chairman of anybody, body of people makes, can be challenged, and you can challenge this, but I'm going to have to say that it's a majority vote at this point. Do you want to, okay, all right, Mr. Show, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Anything else that, Commissioner Bergdorff?
Yes, I would like to be added to the agenda for committee on committees, as, to go ahead and be appointed to the library board this month. I was under the impression that I might be on the floor in December, and then again in January, but I have not been, and I feel like it's imperative that we go ahead and have a commissioner on the library board. We have a budget of $2.75 million on the library board, and not one commissioner. We have, tourism board has $750,000 and four commissioners, and I feel like it is time to have a commissioner on the library board, and I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Someone over here, Commissioner Dillon, seconded the motion.
Yeah, we have... Are these the only two things that are being added to the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay.
No.
I may leave early and leave you all here.
Mr. Chairman, one point of information, one other question. May I ask you simply a question about the video?
It shows that it's live streaming, I just checked it. However, I know that IT made some changes, and I don't know if that's affected it or not.
Because I just checked it, and it's not showing on line.
I do, too. I just checked it, but when I go here to where I check the live stream, it shows that it is, so I don't know. I know IT, they said that they had had some problems with people trying to get in to the system, and they had made some changes, so I don't know if in doing that, that somehow did something with this, because it's showing on here that we are streaming.
Okay, based upon the fact that obviously there are other things that are going to come up, we will go back to the waterline instead of voting on these two things. I'd like for the clerk to put the waterline on the board for a majority vote. Pardon? Well, I'm going to give you an opportunity. I thought these were the only two things, I apologize.
Is this really working?
This one's not working, and that one, there's a problem with the coax table, and box. We all...
All right, this will be a majority vote. Yes would be to add it to the agenda, no would be for it not to be added to the agenda. Clerk.
Each Commissioner records your vote.
And it looks like the affirmative has it, so it will be added to the agenda as item number six under budget. Now, I asked the clerk to place on the, on the board, the discussion of adding, under committee on committees, to add the nomination of Commissioner Bergdorff to the library board.
Each Commissioner records your vote.
One clarification, Chairman, this is the discharge from committee, correct?
Yes, to discharge it from the committee. That would, would there be a second vote, in your opinion?
Once you discharge it from committee, you put it up, then...
Then we can discuss this.
Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change?
I tried to vote. It wouldn't let me.
You would put that back on the board?
We are going to put that back on the board, because I don't think mine was recorded either. Yes.
Each Commissioner records your vote.
The attorney tells me that it should be a two-thirds vote here, instead of a majority vote. It fails by one vote, so that will, Commissioner Bergdorff, not be on the agenda.
One more clarification. What was the difference, why was that one two-thirds?
This is still in committee, and what the attorney is saying is that if it's an item that's still in the committee, that has not been discharged from the committee, that it should have a two-thirds vote.
Can I, what, I want to challenge that, where it's only needs a majority?
Um...
I'm going to challenge the ruling. One more, Mr. Chairman.
Wait one moment, just one moment, please.
The lawyer is pretty adamant that it, to be discharged from committee, it must be a two-thirds vote, and I would agree with him, not having done any more research on this. As I say, buddy, in case you want to have something else to say about it, I, at first thought, according to what I read in Rules, Roberts Rules of Orders, that I've brought and marked in my book with me, I, it says at that point that to, before an agenda is set, that it takes a majority vote, if the agenda's been set and then someone wants to add, it's a two-thirds vote.
The county attorney has shown me something else, and I'm just making a ruling that that's the way it is, and if...
He can challenge the ruling.
Pardon?
He can still challenge, but there have to be a majority vote, that he thinks that is incorrect.
All right, the attorney has said that you can, and I agree with him on this, from what I told you earlier, that you can challenge the ruling, and that would be a majority vote.
One more, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner John.
Did I challenge the ruling prior to the vote? We talked about the ruling, and we took the vote. You can't challenge a ruling after vote, you can't challenge a vote, no contest.
A majority of this body can sell the courthouse.
We can have a motion to reconsider.
We almost did it at one time.
You can have a motion to reconsider, but the vote's already been made. Challenge the ruling in the chair was, should have been done before the vote, that's what I was going to say.
Can you show that to me?
You can give me another time, Lord.
Well, how do you know it's in there?
You can have a challenge, the ruling was in the chair, and then you take a vote. You can challenge that vote.
What, show it to me, Commissioner.
I said it, Mr. Becker.
Motion and a second.
One more, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
One clarification, yes. So I have, my experience with this commission, challenged ruling from the chair, it's always a two-thirds majority vote when I make a challenge. So I'm not familiar with a majority vote, so I guess I would like to know where that side is, just my clarification. I was always...
Yes.
...two-thirds majority.
For the information of the people here.
If you're, somebody objects to the ruling in the chair, also the commission is simply...
It's under changing an agenda, and the proposed agenda is pending. This is 4163. No change can be made, except by a two-thirds vote, a vote of a majority of the entire membership, or unanimous consent, and that's not what I had marked. Did you move my?
That's not dealing with that. Overruling the chair, you see. Can I say something? I can't even get the key.
I am, I am, at this point, going to be just holding in recess for about five minutes to let us find this section that has been asked for, so you can take about five minutes. And also, which looks like it's a majority vote, but I, I will have to find, in my Roberts Rules, we were looking through that, and through the attorney's, and somewhere, I had it marked, and it got, it got moved, so I think that we also had some paperwork from the University of Maryland, and somewhere else, it was like a majority vote. I would feel better about it if we just, I think it would be better if we went two-thirds this time, and...
Challenge that rule?
You're challenging that rule? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. This will take only a majority vote.
What is the yes amount of votes?
Challenging my ruling of a two-thirds.
Yes, we agree with the challenge?
Pardon?
Yes, we agree with the challenge?
Yes.
Certainly, yeah.
Which one?
Yes is two-thirds vote stands, no is against the chair.
Yes.
No is against the chair's ruling.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, for some reason, my mic is still stuck, and it's still showing the votes, so I want to be able to cast a vote.
My stuff, I'm catching. That's good.
All right, so everyone knows, as we've had for the last several meetings, some problem with the machines, so I will be very lenient in hearing from you if your vote is not being recorded, okay? All right, challenge, challenge to the chair, yes is affirming the chair, no is against the chair. All right?
Each Commissioner records your vote.
I'll ask the, I'll ask that we put that on the board one more time.
One more clarification, Mr. Chairman, what are we going to do?
Same thing. In case there was any confusion on it, yes is to affirm my decision, no is against the chair's decision, and it's got to be a majority vote, okay?
Each Commissioner records your vote.
I know once, I know a number of people are probably thinking, well, the chairman is voting against himself, but basically, from what I know I've read, I feel one way, but I'm accepting some data that's been given to me here and another. So that dies, and we will proceed. Okay?
The final vote is 12 to 11.
12 to 11.
Pardon?
What was the vote on that?
15 to 8.
15 to 8.
That fails to be added, it's stacked.
For tonight, yes. All right, that is not added tonight, the water is added. One took a majority vote, one took a two-thirds vote.
I don't think we were, I believe there were two votes. The first vote was, and I could be wrong, Mr., I could be misinterpreting Mr. Becker, there was an initial challenge of you, and then there was a challenge on whether it was a two-thirds versus, versus majority, to challenge you. We just voted on that, the two-thirds versus the majority, to challenge you, we have not yet voted on the actual challenge.
Correct.
That's my, so I think we're missing a vote.
I don't agree with it, but at this point, we'll go with anything, okay? So here we go.
Two-thirds vote. So yes, you have two-thirds right now.
All right, put that on the board again.
One more information, can you clarify the call, what are we voting, what is the actual vote? Can I clarify what you're saying?
The vote here is to proceed, is it not, with a two-thirds vote?
This vote here is to actually challenge your ruling that it needs two-thirds.
All right.
To prefer. The vote we just took was to challenge the ruling that it needs two-thirds.
As to whether it needs two-thirds, okay.
To then, yeah, so now that the challenge needs two-thirds.
Okay. Now it needs a two-thirds vote, okay. I agree with that. Go ahead.
Just a point of information, is it...
Just a point of information, is it affirmative vote?
Again, affirming the ruling of the chair, or is it affirmative vote, uh, in, uh, affirming the, uh, motion maker's request?
Um, I think it would be affirming the motion, uh, maker's request, are, are, is the motion maker in agreement with that?
If this gets a two-thirds majority, she would go on to...
Right. All right, put it on the board. Let's direct everything to the chair.
One more, one more question, this is a two-thirds vote that's needed to challenge that putting the majority on the agenda would be, would be just a simple majority.
Yes, right.
So, if this gets two-thirds, we gotta vote again to put her on...
On the agenda, that's the way I understand.
So, to proceed, this needs two-thirds to then vote for a simple majority.
Exactly, all right.
Each commissioner record your vote.
And that fails to get a two-thirds vote, okay. Is there anything else to go on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, can I say something, the reason we have committees is so that this doesn't take place, this just winds up, we're not even sure our agenda yet for people's business, and I just feel it's just important that we realize that the committee process is there for a reason, just like every religious body in our country is set up with a committee process for a reason, or is a non-emergent issue, or something that's not an emergency, we need to calm down and look at the committee.
I agree with you entirely, Commissioner, but, uh, everyone has a right to challenge, and, uh, that's what we've done here tonight, the democratic way, all right, anything else to be added to the agenda?
So, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity, especially after all of this, to, uh, ask for a vote for a task force to address our audiovisual computer system, we have trouble with our buttons, we have trouble hearing, we have trouble voting, we don't know what we're voting on, thank you, I'd like to add that to the agenda.
I'm not sure I understood what you wanted added to the agenda.
I would like, uh...
Is it a request or a statement?
Task force to address our audiovisual voting clarification system, the whole, like, we can't hear sometimes, sometimes we can't vote, yeah, like an ad hoc committee.
All right, and, uh, how would the ad hoc committee, according to the motion maker, be?
I would like them to investigate the cost of our current system, what needs we have, what needs are not addressed, and report back to budget.
Who would appoint the ad hoc committee?
Like to have volunteers from the floor, let's say five.
I'd like to speak to that motion before...
Is there a second?
We already had a second, I'd just like to speak to it.
Wait just a moment. Who was the second, would you please raise your hand?
Oh, and, and if I could amend that, just really quickly, I think it should go to Gen Ops first, for them to look at the feasibility of it, and then we can pass it on to budget to see if there's a cost.
So, you're asking that this be sent to the Gen Ops committee, okay? Uh, I'm, I'm going to, yes, I, I wanna vote on that and just get that taken care of now, because otherwise I'd put it on the chairman's report, which would be early on in the meeting anyway, so I'll ask the, uh, clerk to put that on the board.
Each commissioner record your vote.
All right, that overwhelmingly passes, um, that will be added to, assigned to Gen Ops, all right, anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add, under budget, I guess this will be a...
Seven now, a transfer of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars from the highway department's fund balance to its payroll account, and I so move.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? Would you repeat that, Commissioner Harris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a transfer from the highway department's fund balance of two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars to their payroll line, uh, and after what they've been through the last week, I believe they deserve it, I so move.
All right, this is to add this to, pardon? The attorney advises me, and I, I will accept his advice, that this will require a two-thirds vote, uh, because, uh, it is budgetary, however, let me say that there's no reason that Gen Ops could not take this up at the next meeting, so... Uh, pardon me, highways, could, they, they could not take this up at the next meeting, so, it's, uh, unless someone wants to challenge that ruling of mine, well, that stands.
Chairman, I'm not challenging, just, it is to speak on before we vote, uh, this would, uh, can I, can we ask for a point of clarification, this would raise our maintenance of effort for the county, which would possibly by default be an automatic tax increase for the citizens.
I would rather not even discuss this at this point, since it's been ruled not a topic for discussion, okay, anything else?
To add to the gentleman's report?
Yes. Okay, uh, please take note of these things on the agenda that we'll be voting on, um, on twenty-four oh-one eleven, that is to be stricken, it will not require a public notice, but it'll be voted on, on number twelve. We will not consider, uh, it did not have to be considered as a public notice, twenty-four oh-one eleven. All right, number, number eleven below that, to be more specific, all right, and then, you will pull number three and four, uh, that project, uh, will be pulled and held in abeyance at the request of those people for two months, so that will be pulled, that will not be acted upon on this agenda. We didn't vote because, uh, I ruled that it was not, and no one challenged me, that it was, was budgetary, and we could not consider it. I think that the, um, and I will consult him, but the advice of the attorney is that because it was budgetary that that might vary. We would have to do a suspension of the rules first, which would require two-thirds vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move we suspend the rules.
All right, motion to suspend the rules, is there a second? All right, any discussion? All right, let's, let's...
Mr. Chairman, it's not been noticed, the public.
That, that's what we're voting on.
Okay.
Okay, this has not been noticed, and that was the point of this vote, all right, uh, Madam Clerk. The vote is at twelve eleven, and it does not receive a vote, two-thirds vote, all right, anything else that needs to be added?
Cloud of the water even more, I guess, um, I ask that we put under budget, uh, forty, I guess these would be two separate items, forty thousand dollars for Toletta Hiring and Training and Recruitment Grant, um, and then another forty thousand dollars for Toletta, that's Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy, for, uh, tuition assistance, uh, for sending, uh, deputies to the academy, um, just to cloud the water even more, I had sent an email and started this conversation back on the twelfth of December, asking to this be added to the Health and Emergency Services Agenda, uh, due to our clerical oversight on my behalf, and I guess Legal's behalf, uh, that was never added to that agenda, so I'm asking tonight that we add it to the agenda, so, because of stuff that was out of my control as a chairman, I, I didn't see it, Legal didn't see it, so I'm asking it to be added, there is a deadline, uh, the government has already given us, uh, one extension to get it through, uh, Commission Legal, uh, gave the opinion that it was nothing out of the ordinary, other than standard grant, so I ask it to be added to the agenda.
So, this is a request to add these two things to the agenda, and a second by whom?
Commissioner Lambert.
By Commissioner Lambert.
I have a question, is that a grant?
I think both of those things were grants, were they not?
They're both grants, yes.
Okay.
So, are they following our new grant procedures?
Yes, because it was out of his control as a chairman.
So, I guess, I guess, Mr. Chairman, the, I'm hearing questions coming from behind me, that's, I don't know if it's making it to the chair, but the original process started December the twelfth, prior to us putting it in place on December the twenty-second, I believe, was the new resolution for the grants, so me, a layperson, I think that we was outside of the new, uh, requirement for the grant process, because Legal had already said there was nothing outstanding inside of this, that they, they could go forward and, and apply for the grant, so that's, that's why I think these should be added, we've already asked for the state for an extension to get it through committee, and the commission, well, here we are to take the vote, Legal didn't put it on there, on the Health and Emergency Services Agenda, and I'm not pointing fingers at them, and I didn't catch it, so due to the clerical oversight, I'm asking that we add it to the agenda tonight, it's a forty thousand dollar pass-through times two, uh, state grants.
Two, okay, um, would that require, in your opinion, two-thirds vote? Okay. Okay, for, uh, uh, majority vote?
Yes.
All right, this'll be on the, uh, on the vote at a, uh, majority vote.
Trying to be consistent here, I, and I've, just to be consistent, I think I voted for almost all of these, 'cause I understand the rationale, but, uh, and I'm gonna support this one, but to be consistent, it, this is still in my committee, and we required two-thirds majority for everything else that was still in committee, I recognize that it is not in, uh, the, uh, Health and Emergency Services Committee, but it is still in budget and has not been discharged in budget, and, like I said, I'm gonna support this, but in an instance of, of consistency, it should be two-thirds.
Was it already on your agenda?
It, it was, uh, Mr. Chairman, it was on our agenda, and then we, uh, we, we moved it to old business while it was, uh, pushed back to Health and Emergency Services.
Then it would require a two-thirds vote, so I'll ask the clerk to put this on the board, then, it will require a two-thirds vote to be taken from committee. Uh, Mr. Mansfield.
I did ask the finance director if something would break, and, and there is a deadline of February the twelfth, so I will be supporting adding this to the agenda for that reason.
All right, clerk. Mr. Schoff or?
Mr. Mansfield.
Mr. Mansfield, he was supporting this being added.
But what, there was a, a deadline, what date?
February fifteenth.
February the twelfth, which is before we meet next time, so therefore...
Mr. Pomeroy, Mr. Pomeroy? Thank you. Go ahead.
Each commissioner record your vote.
Yes to add it. All right, this will appropriately be added to the agenda with the unanimous vote. We're going to adjourn for five minutes at the request of the clerk, but if there's no other business here, if there's no other thing to be added to the agenda, we can go ahead and take care of that at this point, and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign, all right, the agenda is set.